Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call the Paramount Planning Commission meeting to order for March 1, 2023. Please stand and join me with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic or which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Sparza.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Moody.
Here.
Chair Weisenberger.
Here.
Item number one, approval of minutes from February 1, 2023. Need a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. John, any public comments tonight?
No public comments.
Okay. Hold business. Don't see any. All right. Public hearings then. Agenda item number two. This is to continue the conditional use permit number 923. And this is a request by J.D. Fuel Incorporated, Anthem Gas and Market for sales of beer and wine for off-sale consumption from an existing service station and market at 7512 Alondra Boulevard in the M1 Zone. And we're going to close the public hearings for this item, and it's going to be removed from the calendar. But first, we need to have a motion to close public hearings.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, and now, this request has been made to remove this conditional use permit request from the calendar. This conditional use permit number 923 from the calendar, and we're going to need a motion to remove this from the calendar. I'll second it. Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Moving to our new business. Agenda item number three. This is a conditional use permit number 931. This is a request by Francisco Madrid Exclusive Auto to replace a spray booth with a new spray booth at an existing automobile shop at 7614 Somerset Boulevard in the M1 Heavy Manufacturing Zone. This project is a determination of a Class III Categorical Exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15303, which is new construction or conversion of small structures, and a Class XI Categorical Exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15311, accessory structures of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Okay, I think we have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. As you mentioned, this is a request to install a new spray booth and to remove an existing spray booth at an auto body shop, and John King will give you the details.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Chair Weisenberger and commissioners. So yes, it's at 7614 Somerset Boulevard, and that's at the southeast corner of Somerset in Minnesota. And again, to replace a spray booth with a new spray booth at an existing auto body shop, Exclusive Auto Collision, at Somerset in Minnesota in the M2 Zone. It's a just short of 30,000 square foot property. I think that's just the corner that lobbed off that gives it the just short. And the building, total building area is 6,284 square feet. At the right is a photo of the existing spray booth, and that's looking kind of off of Minnesota. You can see the vent coming up and the doors at the front. Here you see an aerial photograph of the area. So again, it's at the corner of Minnesota and Somerset. The property is outlined in red, and you can see there are quite a number of cars there. There's quite a number of cars. So part of the benefits, there are a couple of benefits of this proposed conditional use permit. First of all, this has been an auto body use for many, many years, for decades. Actually, the buildings are from, were constructed in the early 1950s before Paramount was a city. And so with no CUP, so being so old or that age of the buildings really, there was no conditional use permit requirement from that time. So it's been operating through the years, different businesses, without a conditional use permit. So this is an opportunity to have a conditional use permit with the, with our standard operating conditions and just to bring it into the fold with the other, other types of businesses of that, of this operation. And with the, all the cars, this will be a benefit of a new spray booth to speed up the production process and to get less cars there, which means less cars on the public streets. They operate Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and they have 10 employees. Here are two views. At the top is looking across Somerset, looking south at the property, and the bottom is looking southeast at the property, property as a whole. On the bottom right, actually on the right of both of them, you can see the existing spray booth. Here we have a site plan. So Minnesota is at the, on the left side, and Somerset is on the top. The buildings are in blue. You can see in the circled area, that's the area of that existing spray booth from the previous photos. It would be, if you approve the application, this spray booth would be decommissioned and removed. There would be no opportunity for the applicant to have two spray booths. The original would have to just be taken, taken away before the new spray booth could be finalized. The, this area would be, of the existing booth, would be changed to a two-vehicle charging station for electric vehicles for employee and customer use. And then you can see at the bottom, the proposed spray booth area. It's set back about 35 feet from the, from the property line, from the sidewalk. 29 foot, 10 inch by 21 11, so it's 654 square feet. And this type of spray booth, why they're investing in this new spray booth is it has a superior airflow and heating system, so it really speeds up the process almost, almost 10 times the, the time of the existing. So they won't need employees to do polishing, hand polishing, and drying. So faster drying means, again, more, a quicker emptied parking lot. And this view, because we disregard Somerset at the top, this is actually looking off of Minnesota Avenue, looking across the street at the, at the location. So again, this existing booth is highlighted in the orange text, and to the right in the circled area is where the proposed booth would be located. And again, that's 35 feet back from the west property line, so behind that taller gate. Here's the floor plan. So the main spray booth area is on the south portion, and at the north is a mixing room, paint mixing, and the mechanical equipment. And a couple of elevations. So you see at the top, the west elevation of the spray booth. So this is what theoretically you would see from the street, but really it would be concealed. It's pushed back. It's behind that large gate. But that's what it would look like. There's a vent. And then at the bottom is the existing building. That's a view of the north elevation. And the circled area is where the existing spray booth would be removed and changed to a two-car electric charging station. My understanding is that the owner or the employees do have electric vehicles, so it would be used. And there are recommended conditions of approval that are part of the, part of the recommended approval. So we'll start, there's two slides, two lists. This list are operational conditions. The second list are more kind of physical appearance type of conditions, aesthetics. So as far as this, as this list, all work would have to be conducted indoors. Vehicle parking and storage would be prohibited. Public streets, public alleys, public sidewalks. Tow trucks would have to bring the wrecked vehicles or vehicles that need repair or bodywork. They'd have to bring them inside the property. They have to unload within the property interior, not on the sidewalk, not on the street. And the South Coast Air Quality Management District, SEAQMD, would, their regulations are, apply, and there are a number of, in the conditions, a number of rules that are applicable. The applicant would provide, need to provide a security camera plan for Planning Department and Public Safety Department review. And again, the electric charging station, the requirement is for a Level 2 station. And a little background, so there are three main types. The Level 1 is the home type that typically takes all night for a car to be charged. Level 2 is what we have here at City Hall. It's more the commercial type, so it takes a, you know, a few hours to fully charge. Then there's the superfast chargers. So this is the middle typical type for a commercial property. And again, this list is the, the physical improvements, the visual. So the applicant would be required to power wash the perimeter block wall, plant vines and those planters along that wall, along Somerset in Minnesota. And then as far as the parking lot, it would need to be repaired. It isn't a state of disrepair, so be repaired. The asphalt areas would need to be re-slurried, and the parking lot as a whole be restripped, and in particular, the, to comply with Americans with Disabilities Act law. They would need to install a cover over the trash recyclables and organic waste area and comply with organic waste requirements. And this, this is what's required of all businesses, so they would have to do this anyway, but this is, we're tying this in with the conditional use permit. And as with recent approvals, they would need to install a bicycle wreck. So all in all, we see this as a, an improvement for the operations, for the appearance, so for the Paramount community. It would be great for the neighborhood to, less chances of spillover parking into the, into the neighborhood. An environmental, finally, an environmental consultant, Lojit Belosis, who's, is in the audience, Mark Lojit is in the audience for, for the analysis perspective. And the conclusion of the report, which you have in your agenda binders, is that it would have no impact on the environment. It's a categorical exemption. And that's it. I'm happy to recommend any, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
I just, I went for the, the fact is that overall improvement, both aesthetically and the quality, more efficient.
I have a question, John. When, when items like this are brought up and requested in the future, is the city going to ask for electrical vehicle stations at certain times or certain projects?
Yes, and a lot of new construction would fall under the Building Code, and we have, you know, the Building Safety Manager, Johnny Wrightmer here, if you have any questions on that topic. But in general, the Building Code has been updated, and for most new construction projects, it's built in already.
Oh, okay. Interesting. I also heard you say those buildings were pretty old. They were constructed in the 50s. I was born in the 50s, so.
It's, it's a different timeframe for buildings, so, you know, you're a young fellow.
I was thinking about.
You were born in the 50s.
I was in the 50s, yeah.
I was born in the 40s.
Okay. Okay. In that case, let's open the public hearing portion of this. Have we got any testimonies tonight, John?
No written requests. The applicant, if you wanted to come and speak in favor, if you're in the audience. Saul, do you want to turn the lights up? If you could hit the button? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Francisco Madrid. I am the owner of Exclusive Auto Collision. As John King stated, this is, will benefit the community, will benefit the business, will have less overspray, as it's a three-stage filtration system. A spray booth that we currently have is an entry spray booth that allows us to paint one or two cars. Our new spray booth will be allowed to paint anywhere from five to 10 cars. Why? Because it comes with a heater. After the painter's painted, done and painted the vehicle, 20 minutes later, we're able to get the vehicle out. It is a downdraft, meaning it's going to suck the air from the bottom. Instead of what we have now, it sucks it up, meaning there's dirt on the vehicle. Now, we have to, we have to color sand the vehicle, we have to buff it, which with this, with this spray booth, we're going to cut that department out, because now it's going to pull the dirt down, meaning we don't have to color sand and buff. So idea will be a quicker turnaround. I'll be able to get cars in and out instead of, because we're going to cut one of the phases. The heater just helps us out on painting more vehicles. As we currently don't park any vehicles on city outside our building, everything's done inside, and I think it's good for the residents as well, less overspray. In other words, on our last meeting, they brought something about smelling some stuffs. I don't know if it's us or J.D. Corvette, but I think it's going to be beneficial for the residents in the area. Any questions you guys have, I'm happy to answer.
That was a good explanation. I didn't realize there was such a thing as a downdraft. That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Those are the new spray booths, right, that are in now?
Yeah, yeah. Everything's got hold from the ground, so we're going to do a big pit hole in the bottom, and it's just going to suck the air from the bottom. Instead of having the air go up and now it contaminates the vehicle. So now we have to color sand and buff to make it look nice, like nothing ever happened.
Thank you. Any questions here for our guests? No? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to need a motion to close the public hearing portion.
Mr. Chair, I did have a phone conversation with a resident that wanted his opposition entered into the record. His opposition was based mainly on the, the way that the businesses at the site have been operated in the past and have been causing problems to the neighborhood with overflow and tow trucks not going onsite all the time to unload the cars. So that, that was the opposition I had received.
But it, but it's in the conditional use now.
Yes, there are conditions that prohibit.
Right.
Parking on the streets. Everything must be done onsite. If any of those, any of those conditions are violated, we can now bring it back to you for a revocation, as previously, we were not able to do that. We only had code enforcement to help.
So with just one incident of, let's say a tow truck unloads out in the street or in the alley or something, just with one violation, it comes back to us?
I would say we would look for a pattern, so several instances of the conditions being violated would trigger it to come back to you.
Does code enforcement still go out and issue tickets or things like that?
It do.
Yeah, we would be involved in that as well. Mr. Chair, but basically, going back to your question, we want to establish a pattern of violations before we take the extreme view of revocation. However, that does not preclude code enforcement from citing the property owner. And then if there is a pattern of noncompliance as a result of, of the citations, then it would probably come back to you.
We've done that a couple of times already.
Oh, yeah. Quite a few. We just had one last month.
Not, not, not with this?
Not with the booth.
Right, 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 okay. Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions here, gentlemen?
No.
Okay, I guess we can make a motion then to close the public hearing portion.
I'll make a motion to close the, action to close it.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, then we need to entertain a motion now to adopt this Planning Commission Resolution 23009, approving this request by Francisco Madrid and Exclusive Auto Collision for this new spray booth.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, let's move to agenda item number four. This is conditional use permit number 923. Excuse me, 932. This is a request by Joe Bernatowitz, Planet Fitness, to operate a gymnasium at 14601 Lakewood Boulevard in the C3, which is general commercial zone. This project is a determination of a Class 1 Categorical Exemption pursuant to Article 19, Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Okay, staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. This will be the city's first so-called big box gym, so that's something new for the city, and Andrew Farias will go over the details for you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Chair Weisenberger and members of the commission. Tonight, I'll be presenting conditional use permit number 932 for Planet Fitness. The applicant is requesting to operate a gymnasium at 14601 Lakewood Boulevard within the C3 general commercial zone. The days and hours of operation would be 24 hours a day, and the proposed suite would be 28,400 square feet within a 78,899 square foot building. The 6.5 acre property includes an L supermarket and also a large parking lot, and the 22 acre site includes Walmart and other retail service and restaurant businesses. And there would be four employees working per shift at the gymnasium. And here you can see an aerial view of the site location, and I've highlighted the site in yellow, and you can see that it is just south of Rosecrans Avenue and just to the west of Lakewood Boulevard. Planet Fitness began operations in 1992, and it has over 2,400 locations in the U.S., and they boast over 17 million members worldwide. And they're well-known for their big box style gyms. And some of the gym amenities that may be included within the Paramount site would include cardio machines, free weights, single-person use equipments. And additionally, Planet Fitness Black Card members would be able to bring any guests for free and would have access to all locations, and also access to massage chairs and tanning equipment at the site. And here we have the proposed site plan, and you can see that it's just west of Lakewood Boulevard, and it would be neighboring to L supermarket. And I've highlighted in red where Planet Fitness is located for the proposed site. And then here we have the proposed floor plan for the gymnasium, and at the top right, those would be locker rooms for both men and women. And then at the center of the proposed facility would be cardio machines, and it would be a mixture of different types of machines. And then at the bottom left, you see weight and strength training equipment. And then at the bottom or at the south side of the, of the facility, you would have areas that would be accessible to the Planet Fitness Black Card members. And then here you have the proposed elevations. At the bottom, you have the front elevation, and then you also have the side elevation as well. And then here we have the rendering of what the site might look like at the front entrance. And then these are photos that were taken recently of the site as it exists today, and you could see at the top left, this would be the front entrance to Planet Fitness, and you could see also L supermarket, which is just north of the suite that's proposed. And as part of the conditions of approval, the applicant shall repaint and refurbish the red curves on the property, and you could see these red curves at the bottom two photos. And they shall also repaint the electrical transformer a dark green color. And then the transformer can be seen at the bottom right photo, and this is at the rear of the site. And for an overall analysis, the proposed gymnasium is in an appropriate zone. All operations shall be conducted indoors. Operations shall comply with the city noise ordinance, and then business hours would be 24 hours a day. And with that, it is recommended that we adopt Resolution 23010 for CUP number 932. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
That's a good one. Questions here? Nope. Nice gym.
How far along are they, if they get this conditional use permit? When would they start operations?
They'd have to do tenant improvements first, so they're several, several months off, yes.
Several months?
At least, I would think, yeah.
You can also maybe ask the applicant one more.
Okay, so our applicant's here, huh? Okay.
I'm with L Super. I can ask some questions about all of their [inaudible].
Okay, you know what? Let me open up the, the public hearing portion of this meeting, and then we'll have some speakers, John.
Nothing, nothing written. It looks like we do have two people in the audience that would like to speak. It seems like the applicant in the back.
Gentleman way in the back, they had your hand up. You're from Planet Fitness?
Do you want to come up and, sure.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the time today. Mr. Farias, thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I want to speak a little bit about our business. We're actually, you know, as Mr. Farias mentioned, we are a national company, but we are individually owned and operated here, so we have boots in the ground, you know, to ensure operations and oversight. What separates us from other gym chains is the comfortable atmosphere we provide and focus on general fitness. So, and affordability of the model as well provides an affordable fitness option for the community. So that's pretty much it. If you guys, I can answer any questions regarding the operation of our business? I think there was a question regarding timeline. Yeah, so upon approval today, we'll start some of our construction drawings, submit to building and safety. Then typically, our build-out time is about 12 weeks following approval of permits. But we're targeting, hopefully, December opening right now, if all time, if everything goes per plan.
And you mentioned that this is, is this independently owned or franchised?
Correct. Independently owned, franchised. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions here?
How many employees did you say you had?
Typically, when we open, we'll probably open with 16 to 18 employees, about 12 of them being full-time, and we'll probably have five to six working at a time.
Okay. You're open 24.
And we'll be staffed 24/7, so we'll have two employees overnight to ensure, obviously, safety with our members.
Okay. All right. Any other questions here, gentlemen? Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Do we have any questions for the L Super representative?
Was he going to come in?
Yeah, well, he's, he's here, sure.
Good evening.
Hi.
I brought to that L Super.
Okay.
Building the property a lot. I'm the one that's built it with John, 2009, we're in front of you.
So right now, you folks are, are using the building?
We have, as of this week, we'll only have five employees left in there. We have moved our corporate office to the citadel, to the, it was formerly the Smart Final Building. Last year, we purchased Smart and Final.
Oh, Smart and Final.
Correct. So that leaves the space up for, for them to use.
Okay, good. Any questions for this gentleman? Any questions here? No? Okay, well, thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments?
No other comments, no, no written request to speak in opposition. No, nothing.
All right, then we need a motion to close the public hearing portion of this meeting of this issue here.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Moody.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, so now we need to entertain a motion here to adopt Planning Commission Resolution number 23010, approving this request for the Planet, Planet Fitness. Fitness to operate the gym at that location there up next to L supermarket.
I, I'll make a motion for the planning commission resolution number PC twenty-three oh one zero.
Second?
Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded then. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sparza.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Mooney.
Yes.
Chair Weisenberger.
Yes. Okay, move down to agenda item number five, which is reports, city council actions. Thank you, gentlemen.
Nothing to report. Nothing to report.
Okay, nothing to report today. All right. And item number six, move to comments. Anything from our city attorney?
Nothing to report.
Okay, commissioners, any comments?
Comments?
Or no comments tonight? Okay, from our staff?
Yes. So the Planning Commissioners Academy is this month. So we're looking to see when there's some information available on what sessions they have. So we'll deliver that as soon as something is available. We'll deliver it to your homes.
Very good, thank you. Okay, then that case, I guess we will adjourn this meeting tonight at this time. And we will plan to meet again on April fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P.M.
Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board member Moody.
Yes.
Board member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Sparza.
Here. Item one is the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of February first.
Board member Moody.
Yes.
Board member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Sparza.
Yes. Any public comments?
No public comments.
Your business?
No.
Item two is DRA number twenty-three oh oh four. And that's a request by Alberto Lopez, Mr. Jay's Bar, to remodel the exterior of an existing sixteen hundred square foot commercial building and construct a one thousand three hundred and twelve square foot addition at seventy-eight twenty-four Alondra Boulevard in the C three general commercial zone.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. So the planning commission recently approved an expansion of the alcohol license for Mr. Jay's Bar. And this evening, they're here for requesting approval to do an addition. And Ivan Reyes will walk you through the item.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the board. We are revisiting a previously approved project. Late last year, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit number nine twenty-one. This was a request to upgrade a bar with the cells of beer to include a full line of alcohol. One of the conditions of the approval was to enhance the existing structure with an exterior building facade remodel prior to the cell of wine and distilled spirits. The applicant has also taken this a step further by proposing an addition to the existing building. So this is a request to remodel the existing one thousand six hundred and eighty square foot building and to construct a one thousand three hundred and twelve square foot addition located at seven eight two four Alondra Boulevard within the C three general commercial zone. And here's a photo just depicting of the, the existing conditions. So here's another photo on the left-hand side depicts the east side of the property where the proposed addition will be located. And the photo on the right shows the north side of the building where the main entrance is located. That's off of Alondra Boulevard. So the subject site is located on the southeast corner of Alondra Boulevard and Colorado Avenue. It's within the central business district. So the yellow shows the property lines for the, for this site. So here's a proposed footprint of the existing building. This will have an exterior remodel. And then the proposed additions to the east side of the, of the building. And on the left-hand side is the, the parking lot. So here's the proposed floor plan. So on the left-hand side, the red line indicates the existing footprint of the bar. The orange area indicates the new seating, like the bar seating that would be remodeled interior. The seats will remain the same. So there is no net increase in seating. That's still at thirty-three feet, thirty-three seats, I mean. And for the new floor area, so this is the proposed addition, consists of a billiard floor area, a walk-in cooler, two restrooms, liquor, liquor storage area, and an office. So when complete, the gross floor area of the bar will be two thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square feet. As far as for the design, the applicant proposes an art deco architectural design for the new addition with a smooth-tuckle finish and color to match the existing building. The design will utilize varying roof lines and refurbish the existing art deco architectural features located on the north side of the existing building. Exterior features include a wood trellis, exterior decorative lighting, and wood shutters. The building will also include a decorative fence on the south side of the building for privacy to the adjacent property. And with that, it's recommended approval for development review application number twenty-three zero zero four. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
One question. You said that there's no increased capacity?
For the seating, yes.
And for parking is still the same?
Parking will remain the same.
Any other questions?
If they, if the capacity for patrons was increased, would that require a parking increase also?
Yeah, yeah, that would trigger the new seating to require additional parking. So if, in the event that does happen, we would have to amend the conditional use permit for, for that.
Okay, just wondering.
Any other questions?
What took it so long to do this?
Really? Okay, I need a motion for DRA number twenty-three oh four.
Yes.
Board member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Sparza.
Yes. Okay, item three is just any comments from board members, staff?
Nothing from staff.
Moving the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till April fifth, twenty twenty-three at six P.M.
Paramount Economic Development Board.
Board member Sparza.
Here.
Board member Weisenberger.
Here.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Moody.
Okay, approval of minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Board member Sparza.
Yes.
Board member Weisenberger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Chair Moody.
Yes. Uh, no public comments.
Uh, no public comments, no.
Your business?
Yes, uh, that would be the item number two, oral report. So John King will handle this.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Chair Moody and board members. So this is kind of a sneak peek. Next month, the Development Review Board will be reviewing a mural project after the city staff takes a look at applications that have been coming in for this, this project I'll get into. So we, the city has a mural program called Paramount Paints, Paramount Paints.
Excuse me.
But just to back up a bit, connecting this to economic development, just gonna put this out there, there's a, a study, there was some research from the Americans for the arts, noting the benefits of arts of all types, performing arts, visual arts, the benefits to property values, jobs, the U.S. GDP. So all in all, I think most folks would agree that art is complementary to a jurisdiction's economy, local economy and, and, you know, state and throughout the country. So for this project, it's, it's pretty exciting. So it's, it's a mural project behind eight oh two six Alondra Boulevard. This is the former mortuary that's now CNH Adult Daycare. So Paramount, near Paramount and Alondra, go to the east, you have Arco, and then just to the east is this property. So it's that property, which has two buildings, two commercial buildings facing the alley. And then to the south of that, we have two residential properties that we're tying into this proposal. So we're soliciting proposals now. It's, it's been open for about a month, close to a month. And today's actually, actually the deadline. I believe we have, though the deadline is technically midnight, there will be twenty applications in. So it's gonna be a tough, tough choice. The theme we put out was for vibrancy and positivity in the community. And you can see the schedule here. So today's the deadline. And we hope to review on the staff level and have a, and notify the selected artist, preliminarily selected artist, and because it goes back again to the Development Review Board. And that's by our, by our code. The planning commission adopted some, well, recommended regulations to the city council a few years back for art on private property, publicly accessible art on private property. And the process involves the, the DRB taking a look. So with the approval from the Development Review Board on April fifth, then it would move on for the artist to submit required agreement documents with signature later on in that month. And to start in May with the, the goal is to complete the mural in June, June five. And at the right, you could see the, one of the flyers we, we put out through social media and other, other sources. And just to show you where this mural would go, so here are the two walls at the, the two commercial buildings at California and Alondra. The one's two thousand one hundred and ninety square feet, the other's eight hundred and twelve square feet. And then the two residential properties, you have about a six-foot-high wall, thirty-two feet in length, or a five-foot height. And then around this, well, it's a garage, so not counting the garage door. And that is all. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Maybe I should add that this is, this program is funded through development fees. So when private development comes through and submits plans, well, after you approve it, they submit plans to building and safety. And if the value, project value is more than a hundred thousand dollars, that kicks in a one percent fee for the arts. And that's really it.
Comments for the board members? Hey, I got, do they paint it with any of that, like anti-graffiti stuff on it? More of the, make it easier to clean off if somebody does it?
Yes, great question. So it's a double coat. It's a special coat, anti-graffiti for vandalism. And secondly, for, to preserve from UV rays. So for just sunlight, it'll make them last a lot longer.
And just twenty applicants, you said?
Um, I, last I checked before coming here, there were nineteen. I would expect at least one or two more. So, yeah, but twenty plus.
And who approves that? Who approves the?
You do.
They do.
Well, the.
Comes back to us. We look at, we look at it.
Before we get it to you next month, there will be a staff committee of some type that will review these proposals. And I guess we should look at them all at, at once. I have peeked at a few. And there's, there's a range of styles. So it's, it's interesting, you know. Some are more abstract, some are people, some are more directly related to Paramount, some are, could be anywhere, but they're, they're really nice. So really tough.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see the picture.
Will we only get to the final one, or will we get a couple of options?
Well, that's a good question. Our, our idea was to select the one and for your final review. But if, if you'd like, I mean, we could potentially just show you what, what we went through, I mean, those other ones.
Right.
We're, we're gonna make a recommendation to you.
That's why I asked the question.
Yes.
I tell you what, what we have around the city is great. So we've been choosing them. It's been a great job.
Yep.
Yeah.
And there'll be other, well, I should add, there will be other opportunities. So there are plenty of blank walls that, that do get some vandalism. And this is, as you know, it's a deterrent. So it looks beautiful, and outflow deters vandalism of all types.
How do you determine the location? Is there a priority list?
You know, there's not a list. We, we do have kind of a mental list. We're taking note. It's more, I don't know, it's not really a science tool. It's more art than science. They, you don't want a wall. There are some great walls, otherwise great walls, but a business may have a sign, and you don't want to disrupt their business advertising. Or you want, if you do, you want to be very specific in the solicitation that it would not disrupt the business sign. So there are, there are a number of, of issues and topics that we have to kind of juggle.
Oh, okay. John, is there some type of a theme that is suggested to the applicants?
Yes, and this one, it was positivity and vibrancy in the community.
Okay.
Or vibrancy and positivity in the community.
You said that, I probably missed it, thank you.
No problem.
Comments for the staff?
Uh, no comments.
Great. The Paramount Economic Development Board is adjourned till April fifth at six P.M.
Great.